Okay, everyone. Thank you for your patience and I apologize for the delay. My name is Pascal Jean Giles and I'm the Outreach Director for Senator Reichlin Melnik's office. We want to thank you for joining us today on our virtual town hall. For those of you who are here in the Zoom meeting, there is a Q and A box that if you have any questions throughout the live stream, you can put them in that area and we will see them. For anyone watching on social media, there are in our comment section, you can also put your questions there. We have staffers keeping an eye on that area in case anyone has any questions. Without any further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Senator Reichlin Melnik.
Thanks so much, Pascal, for getting us started and thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. Whether you're watching here on Zoom or watching on Facebook Live or whether you'll watch the video on our Facebook page a couple of days from now. Really appreciate you taking time from your evening to hear a little bit about the work that's going on in Albany and to hear me talk and take some questions from so many people in our district. Before we get started with questions, I really just wanted to thank you all for being here. Wish you a Happy New Year and of course, hope that everybody in these incredibly difficult times is staying safe, both yourself, your family, your loved ones. And you know, we're going to get through this. We are making progress and I know it is a challenging and scary and a difficult time because of this virus and the disruption it's brought to our lives and so much worse. But we are going to get through this and you know, I just want you to know that. So with that, Pascal, would love to start hearing questions. I know we've had some submitted from people in our community before this hall, town hall. Would love to hear what we've got and obviously, if you have questions, please use the Q and A function or submit on Facebook Live so we can take some live questions as well. Thanks.
Okay, so our first question is from Michael from NIAC. He asks, now that the state legislature is back in session, what are some of your priorities?
So it's, it's an important question and as we're starting the session this year, there's a lot of priorities that I'm focused on. Both the big picture that I hope as a state government, we're going to be able to make progress on, including property tax relief and work on climate change, work for transportation projects and things like that. And then the specifics and bills that I'm focused on. One of the priorities that I really hope to work on is a piece of legislation I expect to introduce in the next week or two called the RN Act for Respect Nurses. What we're seeing right now across New York State is a major staffing crisis in the nursing field. In fact, in a lot of our healthcare fields and making sure that we have enough people employed as nurses in New York to care for people in hospitals and nursing homes and other facilities, it's a major problem. Even before COVID, there were estimates that 20,000 to 30,000 nurse vacancies would be, we'd have 20,000 to 30,000 nurse vacancies by 2030 and COVID has made that problem worse. So this will be an important piece of legislation that we're ready to introduce and will make a difference on making sure that we've got people in the healthcare field necessary to care for patients. I'm also looking at trying to introduce a package of bills, some which I have and making those through, passed through the Senate. When it comes to college affordability, we know that it continues to be a challenge for many middle-class families. And so introducing legislation that is going to increase the availability of financial assistance, help new groups of people afford college and vocational education programs. That's one of the priorities that I have this year and will continue to fight for. And when it comes to education, certainly, we want to continue the progress we made to fund our public schools. This last budget in the 2021 year, we put in more than a billion dollars into foundation aid in the state budget process. And that foundation aid money was going to our schools all over New York and here in the 38th District. What they finally should have been getting from New York all along. It makes a difference for kids and teachers and it makes a difference for taxpayers because when New York funds our schools, it means that our local taxpayers get a little bit of a break. And you saw that in 2021, many school districts in our area proposed budgets that held property taxes absolutely flat, a 0% increase for the first time in a long time. We need to keep that going. We need to help kids. We need to help schools. And really make sure we're focusing on getting universal pre-K as well. New York City families already have advantage, have that to take advantage of. And here in the suburbs in Westchester and Rockland, we don't. So could go on, but those are a couple of the priorities which I certainly plan to be fighting very strongly for in the legislative session that just began last week.
All right, so Glenn from Airmont wants to know, is Kathy Hochul doing a good job as governor, in your opinion?
She's, she's certainly doing a lot better job than the last governor. I will say that without hesitation. She, she has had a tough, you know, tough role to come in in the middle of a term and really try to pick up the pieces. And of course, everything that the state's been dealing with, with COVID hasn't made that any easier. But I really do think she's, she's doing a good job so far. She's certainly been a lot easier for those of us who represent this area in the legislature to work with. She, unlike her predecessor, doesn't seem to feel that the entire state needs to revolve around her and she is able to be responsive. She even said in her State of the State address that she believes the governor has got to work with the legislature. We are a co-equal branch of government. We're all accountable to voters. We are all equally elected and need to be focused on priorities together and not on butting heads and battling. So that was really welcome and I think on some of the substance too, I'm liking what I'm hearing. Interstate of the State proposals that she outlined last week. She talked about a new billion-dollar investment in middle-class property tax relief, which if that follows through, would be phenomenal, phenomenal news. It'd be a game changer for people. We put aside in the budget in 2021, $440 million in middle-class property tax relief, circuit breaker program for households making under a quarter million dollars and paying at least 6% of their income in their property taxes. And unfortunately, that's a lot of families right here in our district. And so added to that 440 million, if we do get an extra billion dollars in middle-class tax relief this year, I think that that is going to be a great day for so many families in our district. So I do think she's off to a good start and look forward to working with her hopefully in a positive direction during the legislative session this year.
All right, so both Stephen from Spring Valley and Lillian in New City want to know if you can provide an update on the New York State involvement in the East Ramapo School District? And what, if anything, can you do to provide greater equity in the East Ramapo School District?
That, that's a really important topic and it's certainly something that I have heard from, even right when I first began running for this position at the end of 2019. I'm a former elementary school teacher. It was the first job that I held out of college. And I taught in an inner-city school district in many respects, demographically quite similar to East Ramapo, although without the division between the public and the private school communities. And giving kids the opportunity to have an excellent education is always something that is absolutely at the forefront of what I'm focused on. And so East Ramapo, as so many of us know, has struggled over the years to provide that type of quality education to children in the public schools. There have been cuts over the years to teachers. There's been cuts to arts, to music, to extracurricular programs. There are not a sufficient number of counselors, whether mental health counselors, guidance counselors. And New York had an obligation to do more and we did that in two ways in 2021. And the first I sort of alluded to a little bit, when it comes to foundation aid, which is the state's main source of assistance to local governments, we made a record increase in the budget. And for East Ramapo, that made a big difference. So the school district in East Ramapo got in this most recent year, an additional seven and a half million dollars from New York State. And of course, that's on top of millions upon millions of dollars coming in from, from Washington, from the federal government. So additional funding certainly goes a long way towards addressing some of the equity issues. But the elephant in the room and one that we felt we needed to tackle was the fact that, that you know, the district with the division between public and private school communities and the fact and the reality that the school board has a majority of members who do not use the public schools has been a source of particular problems for the district. So I was introduced legislation along with Assemblyman Ken Zabrowski that finally gets the toughest state oversight in New York for the East Ramapo District. East Ramapo is now the only district in New York State where there is a state-appointed monitor who has the ability, there's two monitors actually, they have the ability to, if needed, overrule decisions from the school board if those decisions are not in the best fiscal or academic interests of the district. And it's not something that we hope they're going to have to use on an everyday basis. But it is incredibly important that New York State have this oversight. And so for the next four years at least, the district will be under, under close eyes from New York. And we need to make sure that just because children live in the East Ramapo District, they're not getting a substandard or an inferior education. And I will continue and have been continuing even since the passage of this legislation, monitoring the district closely. I engage and have conversations on at least a monthly basis, sometimes more recently, more regularly with the superintendent and with the monitors and with the New York State Education Department and with the school board as needed and with members of the community. We need to make sure these kids are getting the education they deserve.
All right, so Akadia from Austin asks, will the constitutional amendments tied to the ballot measures that were defeated this past fall be reintroduced this year for people to vote on again?
That, that's a, that's a good question because, so we did have a couple of ballot measures on, on the ballot back in 2021. It still feels like this year, we're onto 2022 now. And unfortunately, although some passed, especially a critical one relating to preserving the right for New Yorkers to a clean and healthy environment, clean air, clean water, that did pass and is now part of our state constitution. Two really important constitutional amendments related to voting rights did not pass. And that was, had to do with when people can register to vote. Because right now, New York significantly restricts that you cannot register to vote very close to an election. If you miss the cutoff, you're out of luck, even if you're eligible to vote. And another constitutional amendment that had to do with when you can request an absentee ballot. Because right now, New York has always had very strict regulations on that. And if somebody wants an absentee ballot, they really have to jump through hoops to certify to get one. And in my mind, people should be able to vote whatever method they want, whether they want to come in person or they want to vote via absentee ballot, whether they're worried about their safety or simply it's convenient. So many other states in the country have done this and taken these steps. It isn't a Democratic or Republican issue. There are blue states and red states that have very similar regulations. And so it was disappointing. We had pretty low turnout and not a lot of education around these ballot proposals in 2021. And so I think that we do need to continue looking for ways, hopefully in a couple of years, to come back to voters, make the case, I guess, a little bit more persuasively about why New York would be doing the right thing if we make it easier rather than more difficult for people to exercise their constitutional rights to vote.
So Amanda from Valley Cottage wants to know, it's upsetting, it's really upsetting to read about the strain on our hospitals and nursing homes, especially when I read there aren't enough nurses to cover shifts. What can you do at the state level to get more nurses into our healthcare facilities?
So I guess I sort of touched on that a little bit in my first, in the first question who asked about priorities. But that would go back to this issue of, we need new state incentives and we need new state legislation, which I am working on when it comes to incentivizing people to become nurses and stay in the healthcare field. And so without going into tremendous detail, the bill that I'm putting together is kind of a kitchen sink approach. We have a major problem when it comes to nursing and really throughout the healthcare field, but nursing in particular. We have a major problem and it predated COVID, but COVID has certainly made it worse because you can read stories in the paper and see stories on TV almost every day about how healthcare workers are burned out by this two years that we've now been struggling with this virus. And people are leaving the field in record numbers. They don't feel respected and they feel like the quality of their jobs isn't there and the pay in some cases isn't there. So we need to take approaches where we help make it easier for people to afford to become nurses. We help incentivize people that might be near retirement age not to retire, to stick around a little bit more to help train the next generation of healthcare workers and nurses. We need to help schools of nursing actually expand their physical facilities to be able to accommodate classes of students. Because right now, one of the major constraints that has kept people from going into nursing is there's literally a lack of space in some of these programs and a lack of instructors and a lack of opportunity. In order to become a nurse, you need clinical practice. You need to be there while being trained in a hospital or in a nursing home by people that can train you. And there is a lack of those trainers because in many cases, it's additional work without a lot of additional compensation. So a lot of different approaches we can take. This is not an issue that is just something I'm focused on. Again, you look around and there are story after story after story in the media about the challenges that we're facing right now. And it's only going to get worse if we don't act.
So Agnes from Briar Cliff Manor asks, recently, USA Today reported that more hurricanes could hit New York due to climate change. We already have a ton of damage from Irene, Sandy and Ida. Our previous stable home insurance is going up after Irene and Sandy and doubled in the last 10 years. What are you doing to, one, get New York State off of fossil fuels? Two, protect New Yorkers' life and property in the short term? She strongly recommends a New York State carbon tax that would be used to give everyone a payout to help with the climate-related cost. All money should be distributed back.
Good, good question. A lot, a lot there. So just, of course, in the broad brush, we have to confront and get serious about what climate change is already doing. As, as the questioner, I think Agnes mentioned, we're seeing increased hurricanes. We're seeing storms that might have been once-in-a-century storms coming every couple of years. And some of these storms aren't even necessarily hurricanes. They don't have names. They're just, you know, downpours, flash floods that come all at once and we get the kind of rain we should have spread over a month in a few hours. So we know that the consequences are already happening and if we don't act, not just as a state, because there's, well, we can be very active. We need the national and the international community to step up too. But the consequences are going to be felt, not just, you know, of course, by me, by you, by people who are alive today, but by our kids and our grandkids to come, we have to act. And, and New York, I think, has taken some pretty bold steps on this compared to many states. We, I say we, I was in the legislature in 2019, but, but just a couple of years ago, New York passed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the CLCPA, which sets very ambitious goals for getting New York State as much off of fossil fuels and carbon neutral as we can. And that includes significant shifts over the coming 15 and 20 years in our energy sector to make sure we're investing in renewable energy, whether that's wind or solar or other types of renewable energy. And to make sure that we're trying to get our transportation sector off of fossil fuels as well. That could be particularly on the personal car side. So we passed legislation this year in New York that the governor signed into law that by 2035, which is just under 15 years from now, we will phase out the sale of new fossil fuel-powered cars. And there's a lot of work to do to get us to that point. We need the infrastructure and we need the auto manufacturers to step up and start producing these cars in much greater numbers, which I think they'll do because California took a recent step, the same direction towards phasing out the sale of fossil fuel-powered cars. And when you have some of the biggest markets, some of the biggest states in the country, in New York and California, taking this step, I think that the car manufacturers are going to have to take notice. So we do have a lot of work to do and actually, those of you watching this evening also have some work to do because on your ballots in November will be a $3 billion and possibly $4 billion bond act to approve, which you'll need to approve as voters for New York State to invest these funds in new renewable energy projects, in open space preservation, in flood mitigation, in making sure that coastal communities along the Hudson River are protected from rising sea levels. That people that live in floodplains have the protection that they need, that we're preserving our open space and our watersheds so that when there are these flash flood-level rains, the water doesn't just run off a parking lot and right into your house, that it has the opportunity to stay in the natural environment. And so this is going to be a really important vote in November that all of us in New York will need to take to approve the, the spending of this money to be able to really make a difference when it comes to tackling our climate crisis.
All right, we have a question from Aiden from Suffolk. He says, I am a student at Suffolk High School. Our current COVID policy, or at least the one our superintendent seems to be following, is essentially if we have enough staff to have school, we're going to have in-person school. There is currently no remote option unless you are required to quarantine by the Health Department. Do you feel that further precautions need to be taken as COVID cases in our school continue to rise?
It's a good question and it's really great to see a high school student who's taking the time to participate in this sort of a town hall. So thank you, Aiden, for that, for that question. We obviously need to make sure that students in schools, teachers, school administrators are safe as much as possible from COVID. This has been an incredibly tough two years for everybody. I cannot imagine as difficult as it was to be a teacher in the best of times without COVID, which I experienced. Teachers now who are struggling to try to balance the in-person, the remote and all the disruption, they have a hard time and students have the hardest time of all. Because I know we're making the best of Zoom learning and online classes, but it's very hard to have that substitute for being physically present in the classroom. And so in my mind, I do think that we need to make it an absolute last resort for schools to move away from in-person learning. That certainly should be an option and schools shouldn't be shy about using that when we're at a peak of an outbreak and it's going to be impossible to keep school in session without massive disruption and without large numbers of people coming down with the virus. That isn't serving anybody's health and education if you're keeping a school open in that scenario. But we just need to maintain and remember, it's got to be a last resort to go to virtual. It's much better now. Imagine if we had this pandemic 20 years ago, before Zoom, before the web, you know, before all these online programs, that would have been a huge problem. It's still a challenge, but at least we do have this option. It's one we've got to use, but we've got to use it, I think, as sparingly as possible and only when conditions are really at their worst, which I'm hoping in a few weeks, if the scientists are right and the epidemiologists and everybody else, my hope is that with Omicron surging now, we might see what we've seen in other countries, which is that it starts a rapid decline. I certainly hope so. And in the meantime, my office is doing everything possible to increase testing capacity in our area. We pushed for and we got a new state-run testing site open in Rockland a few weeks ago. We're going to continue to try to get more tests out there. My office has been able, just announced today, and of course, the demand is such that they sort of went like that. We had about 1,000 tests to distribute. We'll be distributing them this weekend to people in our district and, you know, hope to continue to get more and work to get more testing capacity so that as much as possible, places like schools can safely stay open while people that are actually COVID-positive and are sick can stay home and get well in, in safety in their own home without infecting people.
So Sheri from New City asks, do you support the New York Health Act? And if so, what are you going to do to make sure it comes to the floor for a vote?
Yeah, we, I do. I think we need, we need universal healthcare. We need a system and we need a society where you don't see families in the middle class and working families who cannot afford to pay for healthcare and either go uninsured or have plans that are, you know, deductible is so high that functionally, it only is any good if you have a catastrophic illness. But for basic medical care, you're not getting the treatment and you're not getting the services that you need and you're still paying out of pocket. That's not a system that's working for people. And so we do need to look at options like the New York Health Act that would move us towards a fairer system where people get healthcare coverage when they need it and can afford to pay and can afford the coverage. We are the richest country in the world and New York is one of the richest states in the US. And for us to nevertheless have millions of people that are either uninsured or much more likely underinsured with expensive, high deductible plans is, it's not something that I accept and I don't think that most of us out there should accept it. Some people are lucky to have healthcare they can afford. Too many people in our community do not. And we need to look for ways to improve that situation.
So Joseph from Slotsburg asks, what are you going, what are you doing about the property taxes in Rockland? It is getting very difficult to afford a home here, even if the price to buy my house is low. My children, as well as many other children who would love to continue their roots here, cannot afford to live in this area.
It's the number one issue that I hear from people throughout the district. Doesn't matter whether you're in Slotsburg, like the questioner there, or Austin, or anywhere in between, is what are we doing about property taxes? And so I talked a little bit, you know, a little earlier on, that we have started to make some progress. It is not going to fix it overnight, but in 2021, New York put in place for the first time since the STAR program was introduced years ago, a new property tax relief for the middle class. $440 million set aside in the 2021 budget for tax credits, a circuit breaker program for people earning under $250,000 a year and paying at least 6% of their income in property taxes, which unfortunately really does cover many families in Westchester and in Rockland. The estimate is that this program would cover about 1.2 million households around New York State and provide tax credits for at least some of that additional property taxes. You'd be able to claim it when you file your 2021 tax returns, which some people may be starting to do now. Everybody else better get it done by April 15th, but that's a start. And you know, it's, to be honest, it's, it's an important program. It may provide a couple hundred dollars back to people, but I know that tax bills are in the thousands and really tens of thousands of dollars for most homeowners in our area. And so it isn't something that I say is going to solve the problem, but it does help. And when we hear the governor propose a new billion-dollar property tax program in her budget this year, I am very optimistic that we'll be able to get something like that through in the final budget. You really start to talk about some, some real money at that point. When we're investing at that point, about a billion and a half dollars towards property tax relief, it will make a difference. The other thing that makes a difference, which I kind of mentioned earlier, is the new funding we're giving to public schools. Because if you pick up your property tax bill, in almost every part of our district, the school taxes are at least 60%, in some cases closer to 70% or 75% of your tax bill. That is where the money is going. And so when New York does our part to provide funds to schools, the schools don't have to come to taxpayers in Slotsburg and other areas for as much of a cut. And you know, what you saw this year, when we did increase foundation aid, is that the majority of school districts in the 38th Senate District held their budgets flat. They held the property tax levy flat, 0% increase. And schools are slated to get additional state funding this budget year and the one to follow. And that isn't a one-shot. That is, that is a reliable, consistent source of state funding. And certainly, it's my hope that schools will be able to use that funding and take some of the burden off of taxpayers. That's something we should be focusing on. One other thing I'll just mention on, on the tax front, I was very happy to pass legislation that I introduced that extends the state's commitment to the shared service program, which is a really impactful state program that incentivizes our local governments, our towns, our villages, fire districts, our BOCs and many other public authorities to work together to find ways to deliver the services that voters expect and that they need and to do it in a way that's going to save taxpayers some money while doing it. We need to keep these programs going because in Rockland and Westchester, they've already brought millions in savings to our local governments, which again, if our local governments are saving money, that helps local property taxpayers. So we've got to incentivize the sharing of services, common sense, streamlining of government along with these new state programs that can help take some of the burden off. Because I know we're losing residents. We're losing people, especially when, when folks retire and don't have as much income coming in. And I don't want to see Rockland be a place or Westchester be a place where you can only afford to live if you're a millionaire or some, you know, extremely wealthy person.
All right, Diane from Nanyuette asks, what is your view on critical race theory, which progressives are trying to get into our schools? Is it appropriate to be taught to our public school children?
So I, I think it's, it's one of these issues that a lot of people seem to be talking about these days. And I don't know that anybody actually knows what critical race theory truly means. I think people that are worried about it seem to think that it means, you know, having schools indoctrinating kids and, you know, teaching them to hate the United States or, you know, to be ashamed of being white or something like that. And, and of course, it doesn't. We shouldn't be teaching kids to hate our country or to be ashamed of who they are. We obviously should be teaching kids the, the real truth and, and you know, the good and the bad of American history and our history with, with racism in this country. We have had, you know, many, many things that, that are wonderful that the United States have done. And I'm always proud to be an American and proud of our history. But there's a lot that we've done over the last 200-plus years that is not something to be proud of. And it's important that when we teach kids, and I was a, a history major, I didn't teach history when I was a teacher. I was teaching first and third grade. But as a history major, I know that we need to let kids know in our schools, the good and the bad and everything, both in the past and ongoing, and the challenges we still have to overcome with racism in our society. So I, I'm not sure that any schools around here are teaching, you know, actual critical race theory, whatever that is. But it's certainly something that I think, you know, we want to make sure we give kids a full picture of American history and not either a whitewashed, you know, everything is amazing or the counter that, that everything's terrible. We've done some great things and others that we shouldn't be proud of. We need people to know the truth. We've done some great things and others that we shouldn't be proud of. We need people to know the truth.
Okay. Michelle from Osning asks, "Last year, the Surgeon General issued an urgent advisory about the mental health crisis for youth in this country. What are you, as my representative, doing to address this?"
That's a really, again, we got some really good questions. So there, there is a, you know, Surgeon Generals issued warnings. We see stories in the media on a regular basis. And frankly, you just have to talk to parents of high school age children or talk to high school age kids and even younger. We have a bigger mental health problem with students than we've had probably ever, certainly in a very long time. I have a, a group called the Young Leaders Council, which is a group of very active and engaged high school students that I meet with every other month to discuss important issues. And at our last meeting, we had a speaker on to talk about, from the Rockland Mental Health Society, to talk about mental health and what to do when you're struggling and how to help friends who might be struggling with mental health issues. And the students in this group were fascinated because for them, this is something that they are dealing with on a daily basis. Kids need accurate information about how to cope with mental health issues. And they need to understand that if you're struggling, it's not something to be ashamed of or afraid of or embarrassed, but to get treatment. I mean, if, if you had some physical health issue, you know, if you, if you were playing sports and, and you, you know, broke a, broken arm or sprained an ankle or something like that, nobody's embarrassed to tell people that they, they sprained their ankle or they broke their arm. We need to get to a place where people don't feel embarrassed to admit that they're struggling. And that we need schools to be able to help our kids with that type of issue. We, we need much more investment in, in school counselors, in psychologists, in people that can, can meet with students and, and help them through some of their problems. One of the things when we talk about this, this focus on mental health that I'm very proud to carry is a constitutional amendment to the New York Constitution that would finally put mental health care on a level playing field with physical health care. The language in our constitution that deals with mental health was written in 1938. And we have learned a lot since then about the importance of mental health care. And you really can't separate it out. So the State Assembly passed this constitutional amendment in 2021. I'm hopeful we'll pass it through the Senate in 2022, which would start this process where voters would have a chance to weigh in on it. But if we're protecting the right to clean air and clean water and a clean environment, we should certainly be protecting mental health care at least as much as we protect physical health care. And so that's something I'll continue to fight for this year. And, and it is one of these issues. Doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican or an independent or anything. Mental health care, you probably know somebody that has struggled or maybe you've been struggling or anything like that. This is not a party issue. Something we all should come together on and realize we've got to invest in and we've got to keep state support. You know, I, I was very proud in 2021, when Governor Cuomo proposed in his budget to close the Children's Psych Center, a Rockland Children's Psych Center, which would have been at the end of any state facility to help children coping with severe mental health crises in between the Bronx and way upstate by Utica. We stood up, you know, a bipartisan coalition of local legislators and advocates and staff members that worked there, mental health professionals. And we said, "This is absolutely unacceptable. We've got to keep this facility open." And we succeeded in stopping that closure of the Rockland Children's Psychiatric Center. But that's just, that, that's just, I think, this, this epitome that in a mental health crisis, for anybody in state government, like our former governor, to think about cutting back on facilities and services for children of mental health needs, it's absolutely crazy. We cannot go that path.
All right. So Philip from Pearl River wants to know, "Will the Senate be revisiting its disastrous bail reform legislation or will it keep its head buried in the sand about what a blunder it was?"
So I, I appreciate the question. I certainly don't think we should keep our heads buried in the sand at all. When we think about how to deal with criminal justice issues and issues of, of public safety, we always need to prioritize making sure that people and communities are safe from violent crime. That has to be number one, and it certainly is for me. I think that it was important that the state take steps a couple of years back to reform our criminal justice system. Because for many years, we had a system where two people could be arrested for exactly the same crime, charged with exactly the same crime, and one of them would wait for trial in jail and one of them would wait for trial in the comfort of their own home. And it would have nothing to do with who was more dangerous or who was more likely to reoffend or anything like that. It would simply have to do with who had the money to afford bail and who didn't. That's not a system that makes sense to me. So we obviously needed reforms. And look, we're continuing to look at things that I think could make the system fairer and safer. I introduced legislation earlier in, well, I guess not this year, in 2021, earlier in 2021, which would give judges and law enforcement additional tools to help stop this epidemic of gun violence in our community by holding people, if needed, who have been charged with illegal gun crimes, illegal gun possession and sales and use. Because in many cases, that's a sign of ties to, to other criminal activity, ties to gangs and things like that. And to me, that's the kind of common sense reform we need to do. We're not going to go back to a system where the, the only thing that meant, the only reason some people stayed in jail and others didn't was money, because that doesn't keep the public safe. We do need to continue to look for reasonable ways, though, recognizing that crime's up. It's up a fair amount over the last couple of years. Not where it was back in, in the seventies and the eighties and the early nineties, but we don't want to get anywhere close to that. And murders have been up particularly in New York City. Luckily, not as much in our neck of the woods, but we want to make sure that we never get to that place again and take every step we can to try to keep our community safe. So that's what I think. And hopefully, we've got a lot of colleagues in Albany. I think we do, that recognize we've got to find the correct ground here that keeps our community safe and make sure that everybody's rights are respected while doing that.
Okay. Gary from Chestnut Ridge says, "I saw your article in the Journal News about how Rockland County could benefit from the federal infrastructure bill. I thought you had some good ideas, but how much money can we, can we actually expect to receive in Rockland County?"
So sorry, say, say that question one more time about how much money can we receive?
How much money can we expect to receive in Rockland County from the federal infrastructure bill?
So I don't know the exact dollar amount. I, I'm hoping that it's a good amount of money. And I'm certainly in communication with our federal partners like Congressman Mondaire Jones and Senators Schumer and Kirsten Gillibrand about that. But we hope it's going to be a good amount, not just for Rockland, but for the parts of Westchester that I represent as well. I recently had a Journal News op-ed, which I put together, kind of outlining some of the priority projects if we're able to get significant federal investment that I think we need to focus on in Rockland. And of course, there's others in Westchester as well. Led in the, in the Osning part of my district with getting finally a state investment in Route 9A over there, which has just been deteriorating and is a roadway that was built, you know, at this point nearly a century ago and is completely substandard for the current world that we're in. On the Rockland side, I think there's some major long-term projects we should be looking at. We've got a freight rail line that runs right through Rockland County, through Orange Town and Clarkstown and up at the Haverstow and Stony Point, which could be repurposed for use as passenger rail. It was a passenger train line years ago and expired in the 50s. They moved the passenger service off of it. And so now Rockland, which we're the, the eighth largest county in the state when you talk about our population, we have five train stations. Westchester is a bigger county, but they have 40, 42, 43, some number like that. It, it's, it isn't fair. And, you know, Rockland, we have an MTA value gap where we pay much more to the MTA than we get in services. So investing in a mass transit system that would actually really revolutionize commuting and transportation options for people on the west side of the Hudson, it, it's a huge priority for me. And that has to pair in at the federal level with getting this one-seat ride and building the new tunnels under the Hudson to Manhattan so that somebody could get on a train, even while we're still working, hopefully, to restore service to the, to the freight line. But right now in Rockland, if you get on a train in Pearl River and Nanyuette or Suffolk, you're not able to get to New York with a one-seat ride. You have to switch in Secaucus and the train service is not effective. It's not, you know, it's not efficient. So we need to get that. And we also need to look at, at projects like improving our bike infrastructure for people that want to be able to get around by bike. And look at a road like the thruway, which is congested in good weather and in bad weather, when it's rush hour, when it's not rush hour. And think about adding additional capacity along the thruway, at least up to the Garden State Parkway. Because right now, it's four lanes across the bridge and four lanes, if you're heading up. And right before you get to the mall, it shrinks down to three lanes. And then nearly every single day, there is a backup from about exit 11 right near the Hill in Nyack, all the way up to the Garden State Parkway, sometimes beyond. And so as we talk about infrastructure, I do think that we need to make sure we're prioritizing increasing capacity on our highways, investing in our mass transit systems and investing in alternative means of transit like biking and, and not neglecting our bus systems either. You know, Westchester has a pretty effective B-line bus system and much more effective mass transit than Rockland. But in Rockland, we've got transport of Rockland, transit of Rockland. And if you want to get from one end of the county to the other, which is about 12 miles and usually might take you 20 minutes if you're driving your car, I talked to people that tried to take the bus and it could take you an hour and a half or more to get from one side of Rockland to the other. And that is not the kind of transportation that, that we should be accepting as the status quo. Now, Scal, we have any questions from, you know, from the Q and A or from Facebook?
A couple that you actually already answered, so we're just going to keep going. So both Gail from New City and Gabrielle from Puyamont had two questions that are very similar to each other. Gail's question is, "How is the state assisting adults with disabilities who are in need of direct support professionals and unable to get their much-needed community rehabilitation services?" And Gabrielle from Puyamont asks, "Home care workers are really struggling to do their job and make ends meet, but I'm hearing that some aides end up quitting to take jobs elsewhere. What can you do to be sure that home care aides get paid what they are worth?"
Those are, those are really good questions. And I, and I'm assuming that the people that ask them may have some experience, you know, with their family needing, you know, needing home care workers or DSPs. And, you know, for people who have not had a family member or haven't known somebody that's needed a home care worker, it may not even be a job field that people realize exists, but there are thousands upon thousands of people in New York State right now who are providing life-saving care to people in the comfort and the dignity of their own homes, both seniors and people with disabilities. And these workers have, it's, it's an emotionally demanding job. If you're helping to care for somebody with severe, you know, severe special needs, severe disabilities, or, or in some cases, folks who are very elderly and, and very sick. It's an emotionally draining job. It's a physically draining job. And the pay in many cases, it's only a little bit above minimum wage. And it's basically what you can make if you go to McDonald's or Burger King, you know, and, and start working in fast food. And so when I talk to people in home care, they're losing staff. They're losing people. And what that means is if you lose home care workers, the people in their homes, the elderly folks, the, the people with disabilities that would like to live in the comfort and in the dignity of their own home, find that they have to go to a nursing home. They have to go to a facility, which is not an ideal situation for anybody. So we've got to pay people what they're worth. I'm really happy to say in the budget last year, the State Senate, in our budget plan, proposed a $600 million appropriation, which would help provide fair pay for home care workers. Unfortunately, Governor Cuomo took it out of the final budget and we did not get that passed in 2021. I've co-sponsored legislation and will continue fighting to get that into the budget for 2022. Because we're going to reach a point where if we don't pay people fairly, then more folks have to go to nursing homes, more folks have to go to other facilities, and that costs money. It's very expensive to have people in nursing homes. And so if we are smart, if we want to invest where it makes sense, we invest in ways to keep people staying at home. You know, so there's, there's progress in the Senate as well on this. You know, last year, we created for the first time ever a committee on disabilities, which is particularly going to help spotlight the effect that many of these direct support professionals and home care workers have on providing a high quality of life for people with disabilities. I've been working very closely with the Chair of that committee, Senator John Mannion, who is, who's really making this a priority, and with Rachel May, who is the Chair of our Committee on Aging and has made this fair pay a significant priority. So I hope we can really get some action this year. It's something that you just don't know it's going to impact you until it happens to you or to one of your loved ones. And I really hope we can, can do justice for this industry.
All right. So Jessica from Glovelt wants to know, "What is your position on the legislation proposed recently to eliminate single-family zoning by requiring every town to allow accessory dwelling units?"
Well, I don't think we should eliminate single-family zoning at the state level. I, I believe that zoning is a decision that state, that the state is not, it's up to us to make as state legislators. It's up to town board members, mayors, village board members, city council, wherever you might live, to decide what your community should look like. And, and that's really a core feature of local government in New York. I was a village board member in Nyack before running for Senate. And certainly, I would have been pretty annoyed if New York State was telling us what we needed to do to zone our community. This particular bill that's gotten some attention relates to what's called accessory dwelling units, sometimes called granny, you know, granny apartments, which are things that go in, you know, if you're a single-family homeowner and you want to have a second apartment within your home to provide additional housing, often family members might take advantage of that. The mother-in-law, the grandparent, something like that. And that's something that many places in our area already allow. So I, I think it's a great idea in theory for local governments to make it easier for affordable housing to be constructed, and in this case, not even constructed, but just adapted from existing properties. It's a good way to get, you know, more affordable housing into communities without having lots of new high-density construction. So it's something that local governments, if they don't do already, should seriously consider doing. I know that we do have many villages and towns in the Hudson Valley that have gone this route already. And folks there, it works. You know, there's no, you know, you don't hear from people living in, in these communities that have done this, that the quality of life has gone way downhill. But I don't support legislation at the state level to have New York just dictating to a local community that you must do this or you have to do this.
Okay. Jake from West Nyack wants to know, "Will you be co-sponsoring S6296, a bill that would reduce class sizes in New York City?"
So I don't, I'm not familiar with that particular bill. But certainly I do think that we should be taking action to, to reduce class sizes, not just in New York City, but obviously wherever we, you know, in 38th District in, in Rockland and Westchester. So I'll take a look at that bill and see, you know, see that. But I would hope that if we're talking about class size reductions, that happens across the board and, and really not just in New York City.
So Patricia from New City wants to know, "Shouldn't only legal citizens of America get a vote in any election? Illegals should not get that privilege. In my mind, otherwise, what is the benefit of citizenship that so many worked hard for over the years to get if they were not born in America?"
Well, I, I don't usually think of people as being illegal. I definitely think that we've got people who might be here without documents, but certainly believe that no person is illegal or we shouldn't think about it in that way. And the federal immigration system is certainly completely broken. We've got folks who are living here legally who want to try to bring their family members over, a brother, a sister, a parent, a spouse, whatever it might be, who wait years, years and years and years. My brother is an immigration attorney and sees these issues on a regular basis. And we've got a totally dysfunctional system. And most of us whose families may have come here many generations ago, my great-grandparents immigrated from Europe. They were able to get on a boat and come here. They didn't have to wait years. We don't have that kind of situation now. And we need the federal government to take some significant action to make it easier for people to come here and start their lives in this country. Because we are a magnet for immigrants from around the world, because we offer the most opportunity to people. And we need to make it possible for people to get legal status that might not have legal status now. So all that said, I actually do agree, at least in part, although I, I disagree with where that questioner is coming from. I, I do think that voting is a fundamental right that you should have if you are a US citizen. We have many rights that are available to everybody that lives, that live, that lives in the United States regardless of citizenship status. But I do think that voting is something which, as, as an American citizen, that is our most precious right. And I would like to see a far easier path to citizenship so that people could become American citizens much easier, much quicker, and then use that right to vote.
Okay, we have one more question from Heather from Congress. "Governor Hochul recently vetoed a bill which would have ensured that 853 schools receive funding increases with the Public School Foundation aid. These funding increases are badly needed as these schools find it extremely difficult to recruit staff when they are unable to pay competitive salaries. What can be done to support them?"
So I, I think that the questioner is talking about, it, it's not 853... it it's not 853 schools, but it's it's what they call eight, it's 853 schools, which is, it's a, it's a particular act, and these are schools that serve children with special needs. And there was a bill which I co-sponsored and we passed, I believe, almost unanimously, if not unanimously, through the Senate that would have provided and changed the rate that the state gives money to these schools that are serving a very high need, special needs population, that would have increased the funding the state was was going to give. Unfortunately, Governor Hochul did veto that bill, although it was, I guess, kind of the nicest veto you could get because while she vetoed it, she said she was planning to propose a significant increase for these schools in in her budget. So I am going to look closely at the budget. I hope that she lives up to that commitment. And, you know, if if she doesn't, then we're going to reintroduce the bill and fight for it again. Because, you know, families of children with special needs know that these schools are providing, you know, critical services and and giving their their students and giving these kids an education which everybody should deserve. And we should not be shortchanging schools that are serving special needs kids.
Okay, that is actually all the questions that we have. And we are actually at the end of our time here on our Zoom. Senator, would you like to say last closing words?
Well, well, yeah, thank, thank you so much for everybody who submitted questions. I really appreciate you taking the time to participate. These town halls, as I said, I think it's a good way for for me to hear from you and for all of you to be able to to see a little bit of what I'm up to in Albany. There are a tremendous amount of questions that we didn't even get to get to that people had submitted. And I know we could go on for hours. But I'd let everybody else get on with their evening and and hopefully enjoy a nice dinner if you haven't eaten yet and relax a bit. But there's just so many issues.